All right, we are live here in Hennifield with Tremaine Holsch. He's one of the candidates for Celine City Council in the election this November. Tremaine, uh, nice to see you.
Yes, thank you for having me.
What's, uh, first of all, before we get into any of this politics, tell us a little bit about who you are, where you're from, how you arrived in Celine, because like, a lot of the guy, people running for city council. A lot of them come from somewhere else.
Yes, yes, so I'm originally from Winston's, Illinois, Carolina. Um, if you are familiar with, uh, Wake Forest University, uh, that's where I grew up. Um, I am the second oldest of five. Um, I have two brothers, two sisters. Um, I grew up, it was just my mom, the five of us. I was absolute nerd growing up. I, I love books, I love just being quiet. My mom used to always say that I was the only child that she never had to worry about me being quiet. If I was being quiet, I wasn't sneaking doing something, I was reading a book or I was imagining some fantasy world in my head. Um, but no, I, before I moved to Michigan, I was a swim coach for about fifteen years.
Were you a swimmer yourself?
I was a swimmer myself. I wasn't super quick. But I did swim in college, I swam at Swarthmore College before I transferred out. Um, I think I actually, I found more joy in coaching, so it's funny. I tried, I remember I tried out for swim, uh, my high school swim team my freshman year. And I'll never forget it because I walked into the, the interest meeting and the coach is like looking, and I noticed he has like this perplexed look and finally he's just like, listen, I don't mean any offense, but I have to ask, like, are you sure you aren't here for the basketball meeting? It's like, sir, I cannot dunk a basketball if I had a ladder. So, no, I'm here for the swim meeting. Um, he was right to question because I got cut that year. And so my plan was I'll become a lifeguard. Um, and then as a lifeguard, I would have access to a pool to practice. Um, and then I get better at swimming, so it actually ended up working because junior year I did make the team and I was actually co-captain. But in that time, I fell in love with teaching swim lessons. Um, there was a group back in Winston that we called the Squid Squad. And it was kind of that awkward age or that awkward level where you've moved beyond the normal swim lesson program, but like you're not quite ready for swim team.
Right.
Um, and the coach ended up getting a new job and so they were like, hey, would you like to take this over? And I was like, sure, I was fifteen years old, I was like, why not? Um, and that just became like my, my world, my sanctuary. I love, uh, working with young people to, to see them do things that they didn't think they could do. Um, I love like the team aspect of swimming. I also loved, I love the fact that I could go a best time by ten seconds and still finish dead last. You know, it, it, it was just this word that I love and so I kind of worked my way up through the ranks with coaching. I actually, I've had athletes that have won state championships, they've competed at junior nationals, Olympic trials, um, actually one of the kids, um, one of the kids that I coached, I was his first elite age group coach, he actually just competed, um, in Paris, which was crazy to see his parents texting him like, hey, we just wanted to say.
How old were these kids when you were coaching them?
So I coached twelve and unders. Um, that kind of, I, you know, that, that ended up being like really my sweet spot. I started off as a senior coach, I was the last coach you got.
Yeah.
Before you went, you know, to college swimming or, you know, whatever came next for you. But then we had a need for eight to twelve, um, a good ten and under coach. And I believe, you know, you gotta bloom where you're planted, and so I, I begrudgingly was like, you know what, sure. But then it became like, I fell in love with it because I was the coach that made the kids fall in love with the sport. I was the coach that made it fun to them, that made it accessible, that, you know, not every kid is gonna be an Olympian, some kids may not ever sniff trials, but I was the coach that kind of made them believe that they could.
Well, I, I, I don't know anything about swimming. Something, but I see, I, I, I've been watching these Celine swim teams coached by Todd Bruni.
Yeah.
Over the years win state championships and, and in the end, it might be seven, eight kids, ten kids who do the swimming at the state meet. But the team is, you know, eight, sixty kids or something like that and, and, and you know, all through the season, those kids, you know, sometimes the kids electing captains aren't even one of those. Aren't even the state finalists. They're just the, the glue kids who hold the program.
Hold it together, absolutely. You need those kids. You need, I think, any, any great program, any great city. Um, you need those people that are, they, they are content with playing their role. Like you need your stars, but you need your role players.
Yep.
You need the guys that can come off the bench, you know, and put up twenty. Um, and I, first of all, congratulations to the, the boys team at Celine. Because a lot of people may not know this, but Ann Arbor is consistently rated as one of the best swim cities in the country.
Right.
Um, and I know Michigan competition is, is not light. You got SST, which is doing amazing things, Club Wolverine is, has been a national presence for, for decades. So for them to win is.
And you're a coach now, right, as swim coach now?
Yes, uh, yes, um, a lot of people may know me, watching this, may know me as Coach T or Mr. T. Um, I teach swim lessons and coach at the rec center through the Celine Swim School. Um, and I, I, I am so, I think the saddest thing about running, um, is that when I win, um, I'll have to resign from the swim school because you can't work.
Cause you can't work for the city and, yes.
So I am, like, I'm talking to Sarah, I'm trying to figure out, you know, can I volunteer, can I, you know, how can I still stay like involved with the program, involved with, with the school? Because I think Sarah's doing amazing things. I think, you know, sunshine has really allowed Sarah to take the reins with the swim school.
Yeah.
Um, and Sarah is, not only is she rolling with the punches, but she's really put her mark. I don't think people realize how amazing of a swimmer she was, you know, she was a trials qualifier, she's won NCAA championships. Like, she is amazing at her own, right? And so just to be a part of, of that and then also, um, getting to do something that I love again has been amazing.
So how'd you end up in Celine?
How did I end up in Celine? So this is, yeah, so I, um, I was in North Carolina two thousand eighteen. I had just graduated from a coding boot camp, uh, it had been a nine month nightmare. But I, I literally, I was down to my last, I think it was a hundred and forty-two bucks. And so I checked myself into a hotel because I had wifi. And I was like, okay, I gotta get this job or I don't know what I'm gonna do. So I had an interview with a company called Nexient. Um, and over three days, like, it was like boom, boom, boom. I did the interview, they hired me and I was like, oh my gosh.
Right.
Um, they hired me and they actually flew me out to Ann Arbor on Halloween of two thousand eighteen. Um, so I lived in Ann Arbor for a little bit, then I, I moved to Ipsy. Um, and then there was this, this guy, um, that I met a couple times. His name was, at the time, his name was Joe Shock. Um, he actually is now Joe Holsch, he's my husband, but he was a tech recruiter for a company. Um, that I had applied to and he denied me for that job. He claims that I was overqualified. Um, I'll take it, I, he just wanted to like not have to date a coworker.
Yeah.
Um, but no, so I ended up, um, we actually started dating and he lived here in Celine. And it was actually, I remember it was, uh, April tenth, twenty twenty. Um, that's when Governor Whitmer was, at the time, was just like, hey, if you're living in two places.
Right.
Right, if you're living in two places, pick one. And at that time, we were just kind of like, well, I'm here more days than I'm in Ipsy. So at that point, uh, we moved in and, and we got married shortly thereafter. And so I've, I've been here in Celine since.
Cool. Um, but, so, what, what do you do now? So you're a swim coach, but you also do.
I'm a software developer, I do a lot of technical consulting. Um, as we talked about a little bit before we got started, um, a lot of, there are a lot of underrepresented, um, non-traditional founders who are trying to figure out, you know, as you're just kind of allowing that idea to come to life, they're trying to figure out, or they think, uh, I need a website and I need an app that does this and I need this software. And so they end up thinking they need, you know, all these things.
Yeah.
And then.
Budget, blow up your budget.
Blow up your budget, but then, and then the, the other side of it is like, they'll, there will be what I just flat out call scammers. Um, who are charging like new entrepreneurs thousands and thousands of dollars to build a site to sell cookies at a farmer's market.
Yeah.
And I, as someone who, A, has fallen victim to a lot of, a lot of those like sort of new entrepreneur traps. Um, I just decided like, hey, you know what? You don't need thousands of dollars to bring your idea to life, so let's get together and figure out creatively. Um, my company's tagline, House of T-Rex, is, um, unconventional solutions for unconventional founders. Um, I'm not someone that looks like a typical founder. Um, brown people receive, out of, I think, what, ten billion dollars of, of venture capital money? They receive less than two percent of that money? Yeah, and so when you're somebody who's trying to start something new or do something new and like you don't have access to an Ann Arbor spark, like we're so fortunate to have, or you, you're, you live in a small town. Um, a lot of my clients actually are members of my church back home in North Carolina who live in a town smaller than Celine. And so they don't have necessarily the same access to some of the economic development programs and things that we have. So I do a lot of work with just like pointing them in the direction of like, hey, here is where you can find mentorship. Here is a tool that can, you know, prototype this idea that you have. Like, I really believe that if we, like, if I build a banquet hall and give people the tools to build their tables, then everyone can eat.
Yeah.
Um, and so, yeah, that's what House of T-Rex does.
Cool. So you're running for city council, what made you decide that you wanted to do this?
Um, oh, I still haven't figured out what it says about me. Uh, but I think the thing that honestly made me want to do it is I love the city of Celine. Um, I'll, I'll be very honest, there was a time when, uh, my husband and I, we didn't feel safe in the city. We didn't, uh, we felt like we were too different for Celine, and so we were ready to load up the truck and head to Ipsy. Um, and we, we put our house on the market and it was during like that hot, hot period where everyone had their COVID money and like buying houses like crazy, but our house sat. Um, and so we just decided at that point, like, you know what, we're not gonna run. Like, we were put here for a reason and we have to lean into Celine. And that was when I started to do things, you know, that's when I started like figuring out, how can I get back involved with the pool? Um, I got involved with the city through our Economic Development Corporation, I was appointed to that board. Um, also our Tax Increment Finance Authority Board, I was appointed there.
You're on the TIFL board?
Yes, on the TIFL board as well, yep. Um, excuse me, and it's funny because I, I had initially, my initial thinking with that, with my application was, um, I'm gonna do DNI, that's easy. But at the last minute, I changed and I said, you know what, EDC. And I, I really appreciate Mayor Marl kind of seeing that potential and like seeing how my skill sets could be useful in that space for the city.
Yep.
Um, and so it's been amazing doing that work. I also sit on the Rec Center Task Force. Um, I, I, the Rec Center is so near and dear to me, like I said in my responses, I see every day the, the value it brings.
Yeah.
Um, but we gotta figure out how we can get back on track to, to being self-sustainable.
Yeah, for sure. Um, let me ask you, uh, so you're a person of color, you're a person, uh, a, a gay person. How did, have you changed your, has Celine somehow changed its impression or your impression of it? Um, eh, uh,
Yeah.
Do you feel safer in Celine than you did? If so, ha- I wonder if you could explain it, how your impression has changed, uh, from a place that you wanted to move out of, understandably.
Yeah.
To a place that you love now.
Because I had to start actually looking for that love instead of looking for offense. Um, I think if I wanted to look and point at every Trump sign or point at, you know, at these things, oh, this place is racist. It's like, we've had incidences with racism. But we've realized that like, even in the bluest of blue California, we're still gonna find jerks, we're still gonna find people who, you know? And we have built roots here, like, we have our home here, our friends are here, our relationships are here. And it really was me shifting my mindset from, like I said, not looking to be offended, not looking to be on guard. And when I started to look for the love in Celine, I found community through, you know, all the various cultures and commit, like boards and committees that we have, just getting to know my neighbors. I've, through this campaign, one of the most amazing things is just meeting so many amazing people that care a lot about this city. Um, and yeah, that, that was, that was the change for me is I had to, like, I, I believe that no one else has to make a single change for me to be successful and so.
Doesn't mean those issues don't.
Exactly, those issues exist, but I think that that's a part of why I'm running is to show that like, we are ready for this moment, to show that like, yes, those issues exist, but we are gonna come together and we're gonna solve those issues. My point of view is gonna be a point of view that the city has never had, you know?
I don't think it's ever had one.
Right.
And, uh, we have, we've had a gay member, I don't think we've ever had.
I think we've had one, um, we've had an Asian representative.
Oh, Lish Ping.
Yes, and outside of that, we've never really had brown people on.
Celine City Council, we've had it at school board.
Yeah, at the school board level, yep, yep.
Yep, um, uh, and so you, you're, right now, I, I wanna ask, I've been asking every, uh, person so far about, uh, uh, the fire department.
Yes.
I don't know, I, it might be unfair because you haven't really got into the, to the weeds on some of these issues. But do you have any, any, any thoughts on whether Celine should go it alone as a city on a fire department? Or whether it should, uh, remain part of the, of sort of this partnership with the townships right now to provide fire service for Celine and these other townships? Do you have any? I don't know.
So it's, it's kind of, I, I kind of see both sides of it and I know that sounds cop-out-ish, but I, I genuinely, one, I personally believe that whether we like it or not, Celine is the leader kind of in this region. We provide a lot of services, we provide a lot of benefit to the surrounding townships. And so.
But they do, they do fund this thing, but, uh, they're, they're partners in funding it too, as it is right now. I think that, I don't know, but this thing came out of this.
Yeah.
Controversy, you know, I don't know if you remember last year where there's potential firing the fire chief and all that kind of stuff. So I don't know how much of this was, the city wants full control of the fire instead of having to deal with the fire board. You know, uh, who have different needs and different, uh, pressing issues perhaps in the city of Celine. So they want, the city wanted their own fire board run by the city or maybe city council or whatever to do it. And maybe fun, farm out some of the, I don't know.
Uh, and I think, like, again, I see the side of, of, I believe that we are a leader and I believe that we have to continue to build relationships and maintain strong relationships with the township.
Yep.
But I also believe that if, if we feel as though it is smarter, safer, more sustainable to go about it alone and, and there is a intentional and well-thought-out plan to do so, I think the plan that was presented at last, um,
Couple meetings ago.
Last couple of meetings is a great first step.
Yeah.
Um, and so ultimately, I fall on the side of doing the most good for the most people with the least burden. And if that means that for Celine, we go it along, that's what we do. But if that turns out that, you know, we have to go all in with partnering with the townships and that's what we have to do, regardless of how we go about it, we need to have a plan. We need to have measurable results, we need to have ways to, to bring accountability, transparency to the process.
When you, when you, you, one thing that you know a lot more about, uh, than a lot of people is the rec center. Um, the swim programs there, you're on the rec center sustainability or whatever.
Task force.
Task force, uh, they've just got three more months to, uh, complete its findings. What are your thoughts on where that's going? The, the, can the city on its own continue to maintain the finite, you know, the, the burden of the, of, of the rec center finances?
We could, we absolutely could, but we'd spin ourselves into a city that no one wants to live in. Um, I would say this, I do believe that we have an imperative to do everything that we can to present a path for, for the rec center that benefits this community. That center means too much to this community to just throw it away. At the same time, there are gonna have to be tough choices made in regards to leadership, in regards to governance, in regards to what we offer to the community. Because I think when the rec center was initially built, that was the only place that you could get youth programming, that you could get, you know, fitness recreation. Now we have the school system that is doing an amazing job through community education. Um, there's Planet Fitness, there's other alternatives to where I think it's time and, and the only way that I think the rec center moves forward is that we reimagine what purpose the rec center serves. And I think, um, from the, from the task force, you know, I, I can say that there are paths forward. We know that we are going to need help. We know that it, it, it's not going to be a burden that we wanna continue to shoulder as a city in the way that we're doing it. Um, so there is a path forward. And I think that as we get closer to that new deadline, that new Halloween deadline, um, that people are definitely gonna see that plan and what that path for it looks like. Um, I, I know I actually sit on, um, the subcommittee that does look at the future use and alternative uses for the facility. And I came up with a rec next, I call it my rec next plan that, um, repositions the rec center as a community wellness center. Um, and starts to introduce things like childcare, um, more sort of civic services in addition to what you get at city hall. Um, and really making that complex, a place where the community comes together, a place where the community comes to heal, a place where the community comes to grow. But again, we have to do that in a way that is sustainable or we're gonna spin our way into a city that no one wants to live in.
So I, I have no idea really what these, uh, the, these rec centers in Chelsea and Dexter, they call them, I think they call themselves wellness centers, right? Uh, and they're run by a foundation, I think, or owned by a foundation. And I don't know what kind of, uh, what, what their model is, but do, do they do sort, sort of the more holistic, uh, look at, at recreation and life and, and health than what, what we currently do, do you know?
So I, I actually, I, I will say I don't know a ton about, um.
Okay, I was just asking. When you said wellness center, I was like, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I think that there are people, like, the great thing about the task force is that we have brilliant, brilliant people that work in Pittsfield Township and their recreation that have worked with Ann Arbor YMCA, um, that are community leaders, um, across Ann Arbor, across basically Washtenaw County as it relates to recreation that are really, really going at this problem and, and thinking, I, I don't wanna say problem. I wanna say they are looking at the rec center through the lens of how do we make sure that it is serving this community? And so when I, we, when we're all kind of sitting in the room and thinking about, you know, what is that next phase of the rec center looks like, look like, it's wellness. It is being a place that you can come for rehab, for healing, you know, that we, there is, one of my favorite, one of my favorite, uh, members at our rec center, like, she has a prescription from her doctor that like she has to come and walk. You know, and like, and when I say that this, this center serves so many purposes beyond just a gym and swim, um, that's one of those examples. And so there's also a lot more funding when we start to look at the, the rec center as a community wellness center. I think there's a big push, um, at our state, uh, at our, our, our state government level to start doing things like water, water safety instruction for I think K through two. Um, there's legislation working its way through there. Um, I know a new center was just opened in Detroit. Uh, Canton is, is expanding, like, I think that there is a push in communities to start incorporating, um, nature therapy, start incorporating art therapy, to start incorporating music therapy in a way that is, is healing individuals and healing, healing communities. And we gotta start doing that.
Um, any other city issues that, that you wanna talk about?
Um, I, I think probably the issue for me is, is the city manager search. Um, I, you know, I, I have come to know and really respect and thought L should have the job. Um, and so my issue isn't.
Alone in that, I think.
Yeah, I'm not, I know I'm not alone in that, but my issue isn't, isn't the fact that she isn't the person. Well, my issue is, is that whether right or wrong, there is the perception of impropriety. And so I believe that as a leader, it is your responsibility to know that perception is reality. And so I think that a lot of the hoopla around it, a lot of the disappointment could have been mitigated if the hiring committee came together before you even reached out to whatever consulting firm to do the job. You came together and you said, this is what the job description looks like, this is what our metrics are. These are our KPIs, this is how we measure them. This is what is going to be a hard line. No, like, all of those things should have been decided, they should have been published to the public. They should have been made available before you took a single application. Because then, if the hard line was, we needed five years of experience.
Right.
It would be very easy to then come out and say, L does not have that.
Right.
We've gotten nothing. And I think my issue with it is that we've, we've, we've learned nothing. What is gonna stop us from the next search from making these same mistakes? How are we going to improve our process of making decisions as a body? And if we don't put it on paper, if we don't start doing these things together and having people know that this is how we weight this criteria, this is how we weight that criteria. If that is established for the community before we do these things.
Right.
I think we probably end up with a lot less.
I, I can't help but, as an observer, watch this thing and think, okay, I look at that, that, the list of four finalists. Two of them had no city manager experience. They had a lot of, they have great experience and they probably could have been great city managers even with two, two years as a deputy city manager somewhere. But just to get to know the ropes, to get to know the levers and all that kind of thing. And, uh, I looked at that, that finalist list and I said, this is, this is cooked. Like this, somebody wants a city manager and when, it was pretty clear to me, they wanted Dan Swallow for the job from the start, and I hate to say that, but that's what I think. And my, my, and I don't really have a problem with that, but you, but don't, it feels like the process was kind of a fraud. Not a fraud, isn't money, but what was the point of having the public come in and say anything? What was the point of people filling out Google forms or whatever? Google forms or whatever surveys to to answer questions, uh, if this decision was already made? And you can't convince me otherwise.
It was tied to our opinion. I think honestly.
Like Al Cole could have been, like, and I think the reason why Al Cole wasn't included in the final four was because Al Cole would have provided a real, hmm, we maybe we want Al Cole. Where the other three really didn't, because as much as they liked the the Toledo Water guy, they're like, I like that guy, he's smart, he's sharp. He was the brightest guy I met in in the group when I talked to him all. But if I was a city councilman, just a layman on city council, I'd be like, you know what? I want somebody who has experience as a city manager. We can't afford not to have that kind of experience. And the same thing with the guy who ran the Army Barrack, uh, Red, or whatever it was.
Yeah, I think it was a garrison.
Garrison. And and at the end of the day, I want a city manager. And and uh, so and that's why it's hard to believe that L didn't make that final four list to me, unless they didn't want her there because uh, she was a threat to to take the job. And they didn't, they had already decided, some had already decided to move along. If and 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 we've seen, we've heard all the rumors, but those probably had the rumors about people would leave their positions in within the city if L was hired. And that's, maybe that's real. I don't know. Maybe it is. But then again, if people are gonna leave their city because they don't like their boss, then time for new, time for new employees, you know?
I I I don't disagree with you there.
I'm off my soapbox.
No, I, it's hey, everyone is entitled to how they feel. Um, I think I made myself very clear at city council meeting that, like I said, that ultimately the choices and the way that city council goes about things reflects on us as citizens. And we give you that responsibility, knowing that you are aware of the perception, that you are aware of your responsibility to always represent us in the right light. And I, I I just think you mentioned it briefly, the fire, the speculation kind of in you window around the fire chief firing and and like, it's just like, fool me once, shame on me, fool me twice, like, I'm fixing to go somewhere else cuz I'm not gonna get fooled a third time.
One of the crazy things to me is is we've heard how much, uh, we've heard from the mayor, how great this sir, uh, how great the field of candidates was. And I look at the final, the finalists and I'm not a DEI guy who's trained to notice these things. But yeah, I think everybody is at this point, to a certain degree. I see four white guys. Well, I know, I don't wanna think that though, you know, I don't wanna have that, those, I wanna, I don't, I I really would just wanna take what's in front of me and analyze it from that and not from a certain political view. But I couldn't help but know, four white guys. And they only had one, one female a- apply for the job. Al, Al Cole, that's to me is a red flag and I don't.
I can't believe that there was, that Al Cole was the only in a nationwide search, that Al Cole was the only woman to apply for the job. Like, I was born at night, but not last night. I think ultimately what was the most disappointing thing, honestly, from my perspective, was the fact that through the hoopla and through everything, like knowing some of the members on council and and the things that they have purported to stand for. There was not a single question asked of how does any of our city manager candidates, how do any of our city manager candidates plan on making Celine more multicultural? How does, how do any of these candidates plan on making Celine a place where everyone can see themselves thriving, regardless of how much money they make? What color they are, who they love? Like, I didn't hear any of that. And these are people who purport and and say that, you know, they are for liberal ideas, that they are for DNI, they are for all these things. But when it was time to introspect and hire somebody who is in charge of those types of priorities, it didn't happen. And yeah, I think it could be very, well, why don't you ask the question? This is not my place. It's not my place. Like, I'm not sitting in City Hall. I'm not making the decision to hire a city manager. So I felt like that was something that really just disappointed me that as a person of color in this city, it didn't seem like we had a seat at the table for the search. And so I
It's kind of odd cuz it's, I think it is a very liberal council, to be honest with you. And it, uh, I don't know if, I don't know if the last election sorta made people not wanna ask questions they've often asked uh, for the last four or five years. But it was odd to see that. Uh, even in even in the school board search, it didn't really come out the way it's come out in the past. And uh, I think there 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 are ways to look at DEI that are more, more uh, less political, less. Poor people as part of DEI, that that means something to me. And 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 we get, we got a trailer park right here with a lot of people low income. We got apartments right around the corner, a lot of people low income.
There are people surviving on forty thousand dollars a year in Celine, whether or not we want to acknowledge or we want to admit it or not. Like, it's happening. And I feel as someone who, like I said, I was literally homeless before I came to Michigan, like, government, it's gotta work for everybody. All those voices have to be at the table. And no, that doesn't mean that people who are making forty thousand dollars are all of a sudden gonna be living in a utopia and making fifty, no, what it means is is the decisions that are being made are going to allow that forty thousand dollars to go a lot further.
If if, and my thing is, if you don't, if DEI doesn't take the forty thousand dollar a year guy as seriously as, as a gay guy, as a person of color, then it becomes something.
It's not DNI. It's not DNI. I believe that socioeconomic diversity, even diversity of thought. We, that's important. A healthy democracy, a healthy city doesn't mean that we all agree and that we all have to like, think about things the same way. What it means is that we are able to engage with those differences in opinion with respect and civility. But when I think of DNI, I think of the differently abled. Our city is not very accessible. And I think as we have a growing, we have a aging, a senior population to where accessibility and mobility is gonna only become more and more important.
We have wide swaths of this, like this right here, right here on uh, Bennett Street, there's no sidewalks. You know, it's like you gotta cross the street to get to the sidewalk, and then you gotta cross the street at a crosswalk to get to Hanny Field, which has a nice.
And I know our city, I I have to say, I know our mayor, I know our city is doing the absolute best that they can. But I think it just goes to 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 show that we need new perspectives. We need people who are gonna see neurodivergence. That's a part of DNI. All these things that I think are missing because we've had similar faces or we've had similar ways of thinking about things. I can't sit here and say I have the answers. And I can't sit here and rag on hopefully my future colleagues. Every single one, I know, I truly believe that every single one of them has acted in good faith and moving the city forward. And sometimes the ball gets dropped, but I appreciate them taking the swing. But I think that sometimes we gotta start being more strategic at what we're swinging at. And I think we gotta, we gotta, we gotta go about a different game plan and how we make sure that everyone is seen in this city.
Awesome. I appreciate talking to you. It was nice to, I think this is the longest I've talked to. One last question. What'd you think of the Jazz Festival outside of there?
Oh, my gosh. So first of all, the chicken from, I think it was a soul soup file, Tabor. Amazing. Um, no, I think Diana did an amazing job. I think um, the Arts and Culture Committee put on a very, very well uh, well-done event. I got to buy some art, I got to hear some amazing music. Um, I got to see you, I got to see the community. Honestly, I saw a multicultural Celine. I saw the Celine that I know this city could be. Like, I saw a Celine that embodied, you know, all the things that 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 we as a citizen want. And so for me, I definitely know that we have to start doing more things where we can come together. And and Jazz Festival, I hope grows and expands. I would love for it to become like one of Celine's marquee events, cuz it was, it was very well done.
Awesome. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Trent.